All right, we'll call the Monday, December 12th, 2022, Renter City Council meeting to order. If we could please start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have any changes to the agenda tonight?
The only change we have is a request to table items 14 through 17 related to the Zion Lutheran School Edition project.
And is that a they request?
Yes.
Okay. That'll look for motion to approve the agenda with tabling item 14 through 17.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Same sign. Motion carries three zero. Now we'll open up for public comments if there's anyone who would like to discuss anything that is not on the agenda tonight. Seeing none, we'll close public comments. And before we get to consent, I just want to, with heavy hearts, that I need to pass along to the community that Councilmember Larry Melender passed away in November 26th. We're very appreciative for his service and dedication to the community. Our thoughts and prayers go out to his wife, Leanne, his two sons, Austin and Will, along with his extended family and all his friends. So with that, we'll move to consent. If there's anything on the consent that needs to be pulled for further discussion. Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries three zero. That will take us to the Truth and Taxation Hearing. So we'll open up for that.
Thank you, Mayor, for that. So this is the true, this is our annual Truth and Taxation Public Hearing, and this is, this is, the Truth and Taxation Public Hearing is required by state law. All cities over the population of 500 are required to do this, and even cities under 500, it's optional. So a lot of them do it anyway. It's good transparency. Going, going over things property tax related. So what we'll cover today is we're going to focus on areas related to property tax levies. We're going to go over a little bit of historical information on what levies have been, tax rates, as well as the tax base, and look how those have changed over time. We'll go over the 2023 levy that was proposed, and then we'll go over the proposed 2023 budget revenues and expenses, and then at the end we'll take comments and questions on all of that. So this one I'm going to show up front doesn't quite get into historical information right away, but we're going to just take a quick snapshot looking at what the 2022 tax levy was for this year, and then what we're looking at the final 2023 tax levy for this year. There you can see for the general fund, the CIP, which stands for Capital Improvement Program, and those tend to be capital improvement type of expenditures. And then you have the debt service, which is the bonds that the city has out, which is supported by property tax levies. So we'll come back to this in a little bit. We'll go into a little bit deeper dive on some of those items. So then we'll get into the historical information on some of this. So here is the tax levy for the city of mayor from 2016 to what is being proposed for 2020. And you can see the general change there. You have the green line, which is the total of the three other, the, the blue, the green, and the purple. The blue is the general fund levy, and those are what you think of a property tax-supported departments, fire, police, compost site, general administration, community center, a lot of those things which require tax dollars in order to operate. Debt service is what the city pays in loans or determine the industry is bonds, what we pay on those for each year. And then the CIP, which started in 2001, or I'm sorry, 2021, and then in '22 and '23, that was pulled out of what was, what is the general fund and separated that out. So really you're getting more of the one-time capital expenditures versus operations and those ongoing costs. So it categorizes them a bit better and makes them a bit clearer for understanding. This is the historical tax capacity for the city of mayor. So tax capacity you can read as tax base. This is what we draw on with our levy, which then becomes the tax rate in the next slide. So this is what the valuation, the tax valuation of the properties have done over the years since 2016. 2023 was primarily due to the selling of the higher-valued home sales that had gone on in the previous years. I think everybody has noticed that house sales have been much higher than we would have predicted probably in normal environment. And so when you have those happen, the assessor's office with Carver County adjusts people's valuations because of that. You may have seen that in your preliminary property tax levy, your valuation may have jumped up. That's primarily because as new sales happen, the assessor's office takes that into consideration when doing valuations. And then the third we look at is the tax rate, and the tax rate is the divisor of the levy divided by the tax base. So if you do that calculation, that's a very high-level explanation of it. We could get real deep into how property taxes are done on a technical level, but that's not for this really the setting. But for these purposes, your levy divided by your tax base becomes your tax rate. So I'd like to talk a little bit more about the levy, where it's come from, where it's going, from 2022 to 2023, and the journey we took to get there. So this is the repeat of the slide from the very start showing that 2023 tax levy we're looking at approving tonight versus the 2022 tax levy, which was approved in '21 for this year '22. So you can see there we have a difference between the general fund, CIP, debt service, and the total levies. And this is the change in numerical and percentages to digest that. So the general fund from 2022 to 2023, we're looking at increasing that by $11,788. The CIP going up $184,000, the debt service is going down $32,000 for a total tax levy difference of $163,500. Now, the CIP portion is obviously the largest portion of that. So that's split between, like I said, our capital improvements that we're looking at doing, and that's split between the fire department putting away money so that in the future we can pay for a fire truck, and we don't necessarily have to take out a loan for it and pay interest on it. A good chunk, all of that 184 is going into streets. For 2023, we're looking at a street mill and overlay and seal coating project. That's going to, the seal coating will be primarily in Fieldstone Edition with some in Coldwater and some in Hidden Creek. And then the mill and overlay we're proposing to do will be in Coldwater. And I not, I don't know the exact additions off the top of my head. I've been in the job for two months, so I'm catching up on all that. So there's a section in Coldwater looking at doing, and then a good section in Hidden, or Hidden Crossing, Hidden Creek that we're looking at doing in there. So you can see there the differences. Well, to touch on really quick, why we have this big one-time increase in there is because we're looking at bonding for a couple different projects, one being the mill and overlay portion, and then there's a public works building that we've been saving up for. Building project costs have gone up, especially on buildings. I think if anybody has looked at constructing a building over the last couple of years, those costs have gone up. So we're levying money so that we don't have to bond nearly as much for the streets or the public works projects. The idea is that if we can pay for it in cash now in a one-time type of project, then we don't have to pay interest over time, which will amount to more than what we're doing here. So that's the, that's where the monies in the CIP are planning to go, that 184, public works and street work. So that's a one-time, so that can be expected to be backed out in the 2024 levy. So I guess a lot of you here are probably here because you got your property tax statements, and then it said 30% increase, and there were a lot of questions regarding that. So I want to go into a little bit more detail on that to kind of give the picture of what happened, where we came from, and how we getting to where we're at now. So we've got a couple different looks here. You got the 2022 levy, which starts as our basis point. In state law, cities are required to pass a preliminary levy by September 30th of each year. And by law, once you set your preliminary levy, you can lower it, but you cannot raise it. Where all, Mayor was also in a transition where the city administrator had left, who is the primary person responsible for constructing the levy and getting these figures together for presentation to council. So there was an interim administrator at the time. I was hired in Aug, or early October, so I didn't start till after the preliminary levy was adopted. So you have a part-time interim administrator trying to put together a financial picture of the city that they can then pass a preliminary levy on. So when they passed the preliminary levy, there was one bond issuance in there that shouldn't have been. I reviewed all those figures, and that was able to be backed out. So we were able to back out that debt issuance because we didn't need to levy for it. There was talk about a levy for the EDA that had been backed out as well. And then we had some various general fund budget adjustments as I took the deep dive into the budget on that. So the preliminary back in September that was passed, you can see there that represents that 30, 31%. When we took a first look at it in November, once I was able to get in and start diving into the finances, we made an adjustment at that point down to what was just shy of a 16% increase. And then here tonight, we were able to shave off some more. So the final we're looking at tonight is going to be a 12.18% increase. Again, the vast majority of that back to the CIP type of stuff, so we don't have to bond and then pay interest on a project. We'd like to avoid taking out a loan if we can. Similar to personally, if you can pay for a car with cash or if you take out a loan, ideally you want to do with the cash, then you don't have to pay interest on the loan. For that portion. So with that, we'll then get to 2023 budget information specific to the general fund. So when we look at the general fund itself as far as revenues, this is how our, and the totality of it, this is how it's split up. You have your general fund levy on there in the blue. That was the number we got off the prior slides. And then the debt service and then the CIP. So this is just a graphical breakdown of what it looks like, about a third apiece, roughly speaking. And that changes year to year depending on what the debt service is and what you're doing with CIP and those things. This is the, well, I'm sorry, this was the levy. Here's the revenues. I misspoke. My apologies. So this is the revenues, and so you have about fire contracts representing $67,000 of revenue to the city. You have 7% of our budget. Other includes things, miscellaneous revenues that we get throughout the year that just don't have a great classification. And there is also some smaller state aids and grants that we receive for various projects that we have. You can see taxes right there. That's the same number from the previous slide. So about 46% of the general fund revenues are financed through taxes. Local government aids, this is primarily what we get from the state of Minnesota, along with a couple other small ones included. The bulk is the state of Minnesota. It's called Local Government Aid. It's been a program that's been in place since the eighties, I believe. That makes about 39%. And then licenses and permits, this includes liquor licenses, planning and zoning fees, building permits, things of that nature. That makes up about 5% of the city's revenues. Then when we move on to the expenditures portion, parks and recreation, that's pretty straightforward. That covers the parks that we have in the city. And when you get to public works at about 20% of the budget there, that comprises things like streets, snow removals, street lighting, paying for the electricity on the street lighting, associated buildings with public works, and the compost site are what you generally have in there. Government, general government at 42%, those are things like city hall building, administration, auditing, legal, auditing fees, legal fees, planning, city planning fees, assessing fees, engineering fees, and those like. And then in public safety, you have police, fire, and building inspection, which comprises public safety as a category. So this is a little neat, neat little graphic that I like to throw on here. So this is how your tax dollars spend. So for every top dollar taxes that you pay to the, to the city, how does that get split up between the various things we just talked about? So general government represents 13 cents, public safety at nine, public works at six cents, parks and recreation at three cents, the CIP is at 36, and then debt service at 33. Yes, we are to the question portion.
If you wouldn't mind coming to the podium, please, that'd be great, if you could state your name and address for the record.
Willie Osley, 5171 Harvest Curve. Do you have any figures on all the new housing that had been built? And where, like how much you're getting for tax dollars on those?
Historically or just in this last year?
Just in this last, you know.
I think in this last year, what do we have?
Year, two.
Last year hardly any.
Nine, I think it was. Nine new housing.
Prior was about 30, nine new houses.
For 2022.
This year, yeah.
Yeah.
That was about 25.
About 25 in 2021.
And they're not on our tax values.
They're always a year behind.
It's two years. Isn't it two years?
A year or two behind.
They don't come.
Those as quick as they can, but we're hoping it'll be more than that.
We were short. We didn't have a lot of lots available, and now we've just got a new addition, Coldwater Crossing, available with 35 new lots. So we're hoping for 2023 that'll pick up.
Good evening. Troy Puckett, 426 Fifth Street. That's one of my new houses there. I can tell you how much I'm paying. Okay, so my question is being a new homeowner here in Mayor, and by the way, thank you for all the work you've done on that. It was a great report. Taxes seem quite high here in Mayor, more than I expected. Is there any data that shows where we compare to our surrounding cities? Because we seem quite high for what we have here at Mayor. I love Mayor. I wouldn't have moved here if I didn't. I'm just curious on if you could give us some background on why our taxes are so high.
So the answer to your question, is there comparable data? Yes, yes, there is. It's from the Department of Revenue. They host a great spreadsheet that has all of that. Normally in my Truth and Taxation public hearings, I have that data in as slides this year, since I've only been here for two months. So a little bit of comparison. Usually I start budget process in June on a normal basis. But I was hired in October, so I had to cram six months' worth of budget process into a month and a half, two months, to really get it in there. So that was one of the things, and then in that spreadsheet, what they actually used, they used to have the populations as a column in there, which was really handy because then you could sort by population. And then you could take your, your cohort group, because you don't, you don't want to compare yourself against Minneapolis because that doesn't make any sense. So you sort by population, and then you can take, say, for like Mayor, I'd take 2,000 to 3,000 populations. So we're at about 2,500, and you get that nice cohort. And then I put that into a graph that says, here's where Mayor is, here's where everybody else is on levy, tax rate, and tax base, because those are the big three. Normally I would have that, but I didn't have time to get the population data inputted into their spreadsheet in time to get it thrown up here as part of it. But you can expect in future Truth and Taxation public hearings, I'll have the time, so I will get it in there for sure.
So we can't compare our tax base to Eonia? Our tax base is more compared to like Northern America or to cities that are more, are?
We have that data.
Right, but I mean, and just based on, do you have anything to give us tonight saying, you know, you showed us at 46%? Can you give us anything? Can you give me anything that says we're, I can't, I can't believe that we're under it.
We are. Oh, we're way under.
In our, in our 2,000 to 3,000.
Yes.
I mean, that, that's good information.
I can tell you for Eastern Carver County, we're higher, obviously, than Chaska-Chanhasan. They're around, if I remember right, around a mid-20 tax rate. We're at about a 45% tax rate. I can tell you for Western Carver County, we're one in the lower in Western Carver County.
But we're ahead of the eight ball on a lot of projects, water facilities. We have the best drinking water. We have the best of a lot of things compared to a lot of other cities.
So we put all our infrastructure in.
Right.
In the early 2000s before, when housing was coming to Mayor, we redid all our infrastructure. Housing market then, and that was needing 75 homes per year to pay for that. Well, as the housing market then dropped off, we ended up paying for it. That's why we're now just getting out of, out of a hole and digging out and getting some CIP and getting some money saved up on things. So that's where some of it is. I can tell you our tax rate back then was around 60, over 60%. We're down around 45% now on our tax rate. So a lot of good work has happened from numerous council members. Now, other communities, perhaps west of us, they are the opposite side of things. They didn't put the infrastructure in then, and now as housing, they want to pick up and do how, now they have, now they have to build all that infrastructure. So it's just, it's just where you landed when the, when the recession hit. So if that helps.
Here's, here's what the rates were.
Have you found them?
Not for, wrong, but in 2016, we were at 58.9. 2017, we were at 51.5. 2018, 50.6. 2019, 49.1. 2020, 49.3. 2021, 49.1. 2022, 48.4. And I'm not sure what will end up final at the end tonight. But preliminary was 51.68, but that was due to.
Preliminary with the 30% was 51. Now it's going to be like 45 and change.
So what that is, that you take your home value that the county has assessed, you take 1% of that of your home value, that's your tax capacity, and then it'll be 45% of that 1%. That's how that tax rate fits in, and that's the calculation.
My name is Joe Orick, 1388 Pine Cone Circle. So two questions. The first one, you're talking about repaving or milling and repaving, and that was 184,000. Is that the full price of that project?
No, the, the total with seal coating and milling and overlay is about 1.1 million.
So where then the additional money? Are we borrowing that money?
So yes, we're borrowing the additional money.
So we're really not saving mu, I mean, 184,000 compared to 1.8 million?
1.1.
1.1 million? So we're borrowing 90% or more of that project's money, correct?
Right. So there's questions on whether or not we can borrow money for the seal coating portion, which is about that 150, 180 portion. So to make sure we have that cash in hand for that, we're gonna.
So then I, I think we should probably not pat ourselves on the back too much for saving money on a project when it's 1.1 million? And we're only budgeting one, we're not really, we're not buying the car with cash. We're, we're putting a down payment on the car, and we're budgeting, we're, we're, we're taking the loan out for the rest. So to use your analogy, I don't think we could say we're buying the car or not. And then second, with the water, sometimes the water doesn't smell great. Let's, let's be honest with that. So best water in the area, I'm not sure that's true. But when will we see water prices come down? If all these additional houses are going in now, 25 in 2022 or 2021, only nine this year. The year before that, there was quite a few. I know in Hidden Creek, there was quite a few homes built. So when will we see our water prices reflect the new homes that are being built?
So since I've been here for two months, I haven't been able to delve into long-term future rates. We're not looking at raising rates for 2023, because there was some long-term CIP work called for 3% a year, and increases done by the financial advisors. I'm going to take a relook at that, but that's work I plan to accomplish here in spring and the summer with a long-term planning. So that'll give, at that time, once I'm able to delve into that, that'll be a, when I can give an answer about.
Can I, I just want to jump in, just so people understand, water is not levied in taxes. Water has to be funded strictly by usage.
I understand that completely. That's why when you talk about new homes coming in, and we built in 2000, right? At some point, we're going to hit a point where the, we paid off the investment, and now we can not increase, but actually reduce those rates. Because as everyone in this building will contest, we have the highest water rate around. Oh, absolutely. I'm paying $100 a month in my water and utility bill, and most people are paying that in three, in most counties.
They may be higher than some, but once you compare apples to apples on our systems versus their systems and some of those things. But I think to answer your question, I think what we have, three more years on the debt from when we put, when we built.
Three or four, yeah.
03. So in a few more years, but that doesn't necessarily mean when that debt rolls off the books, now we have to start planning for expansions because now we're going to.
Well, we added a new well.
Meeting, we're, yep.
We added a well, and so now we should, I don't think there's much needed additional coming up.
I understand what you're saying. They, they seem high, but that's back to my point of this infrastructure. The infrastructure was, this infrastructure was built in 03 with the housing market, where in 03, we needed 75 homes per year. We've never done several. We had three years with zero homes. I mean, we're just behind the April. We're, we've just been behind on that, and they, they need to be self-sufficient. These enterprising funds, water and sewer and water, and they're not. And that's where we had a study done that said we need to increase these 3% every year for the next five years. And we've been trying to even not do that and balance it out, so from that aspect.
I guess one follow-up question, about additional businesses. Have we looked at reaching out to people, industries, to come in and help share that tax burden with the residents?
We have an Economic Development Authority that we're now again in a transition from last year. So it's hard to speak with some of that when we lost our administrator in, in April. We're going to get back in with the Economic Development Authority, see what their visions are, see what we can do. It's been tough for us to try to go out and try to attract and, and market and get people into, we've, we've done it in the past quite a bit. It's been a challenge. It hasn't been real successful. What we've been finding, or what I've been finding in these discussions is there's just weren't enough rooftops. We didn't have enough homes where a lot of people just weren't interested, business interest in coming to Mayor.
That's what I was talking about.
Now, we're a little landlocked, where you don't have a ton of places on Main Street that are available for people to put business in. When one moves out, they've been kind of filling fairly quick, but.
We don't have land.
Parks almost full. We're looking at a comp plan to get more industrial area for those things. But yeah, we, I mean, we, we've heard the comments, people love to have a grocery store in town. Well, you know, we, we've reached out. There's not a lot we can do with that to have them come here. They just don't see, see it as a viable location and things like that.
This is like the grocery store of that. That's going to be very difficult in a town of 2,500. But the industry, you know, finding a business or two that might.
We look at anyone with interest. We get them in here. We show them what we have. We show them what's available. We get interest periodically. No one's really gone that extra mile to get here. I mean, if it got to the point and, and where's the beneficial and return on our rest to get someone in town, even if we had to help supplement or do some TIF, we were willing to do some of that. It just wasn't working. And we're finally getting to the, we're finally out of the, what was it? What was the tax thing for the seven community area? The state was giving discounts to businesses if they would build outside of the seven county area. So they could go five miles into McLeod County and get a bunch of tax. So they weren't coming to Mayor because they'd go five miles and get, I forget what it was called, what it was called now, but that, we ran into submissions.
I know that program.
Yeah, we ran into some issues with that also in the past. Does that answer your questions? Yep.
Hi, I'm Ken Plucker. I live at 2491 Riverbend Trail. The figures then that are on our proposed taxes for 2023, those will probably be adjusted? Is that what I'm understanding?
They will be adjusted.
They will be adjusted.
Yep, if it passes tonight, it'll be down to 12.18%.
Tim Thompson, 5139 Harvest Curve. Don't Throw Tomatoes. I'm also on the school board, just finishing up my third term. So I've seen a lot of what goes on, and, and I understand some of the finance things and that, and I get school boards different than this, but it's similar in that you. But it's similar in that you, you don't want your tax to look like a roller coaster. If you're gonna do it, you want to have gradual increases. This, even at twelve point one eight percent, seems like a roller coaster ride. Going to what you'd said about buying the car with cash, I completely get that. I wish I could do it. Most people can't. That's why you finance them. Same with the home. I'm in real estate also. With real estate, with, with the mortgage rates going up, this, the commenter, the, the statement in the industry is you marry the home, you date the mortgage. That's the same thing you guys can do with this is we don't have to do all of the capital improvement right now. We can wait and, and try to save over the three years. Like you said, when there's going to be a break in the tax rate, something comes off the tax roll. You know, do the gradual, climb the hill instead of the roller coaster. Save a little bit so when that comes off the tax roll, we're not seeing a dip. We're going to continue to see a gradual increase. I think people understand that and I think people would appreciate it. And, and you're not going to have a roomful of people then every time if you kind of gradually climb the hill. But when all of a sudden you see a twelve or, or as the preliminary was thirty percent, man, that people are, you know, they see that. And it's like, holy crap. So there's a lot of different things you can do. And, and I guess from my perspective, I would just ask that you look at it again and, and try to climb the hill slowly and try to keep from the roller coaster. I would rather see, you know, a gradual increase year after year. Because let's face it, somebody said, you know, that we're going to see this twelve percent, but then next year it's going to drop. Because we're gonna, we're gonna have all this money that we're saving up. Let's be perfectly honest, it's not going to drop. It's not gonna, you're, you're not going to drop taxes. It just doesn't happen. Be better to see them gradually climb. So from my perspective, not speaking for anyone else, I would just like to see this revisited. And if you can do it gradually and maybe do some of the capital improvement, hold off and, and save that money and, and get it over. You know, get it on in a couple of years, once something else falls off the tax roll. You know, that would be fantastic. Thank you. And thank you guys for what you do. I know what it's like to be elected and sit in these meetings, so thank you.
Again, Troy Pocket, four two six Fifth Street. About that hundred and eighty-four thousand, I'm just curious, just because I don't know. You said this is kind of a special deal, that it's a big hike. I just got done building the house and the day I built, I, I got hit hard on a, on a brand-new road. Two years ago, did you guys take money out to help me in that? Or, you know, because right now, if you take that hundred, at a hundred and eighty-four thousand, everybody sitting in this room is paying part of that road to be done. And we may not live there. Did these guys help pay for my road? So I'd rather see this hundred and eighty-four come out and the people that live there, pay there, do taxes just like I'm paying on Fifth Street. I, you know, I got, I got assessed fifteen thousand dollars the day I moved into a brand-new house. I didn't, I wasn't here two years ago, so I didn't see if the CIP bumped the, up a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars to help me with my road. Not to screw over anybody that lives in that section, but I'm not sure why we should be paying anything for that neighborhood. And just one other quick question, if I can ask it, and, and if, if you can't answer it, that's fine. And you may have answered this in months ago. What happened to the fire, the old fire department? Is that up for sale or, or can you address that or is that not the right place?
That's not really this.
Okay. Or may I can talk to somebody afterwards?
Yeah.
I appreciate it.
If anyone answered, because if this is, so yeah.
No.
Excuse me, no, we've been saving the CIP for streets for now three years. And like I said, after we dug out of this hole and we can finally start saving on the CIP and, and finally getting ahead of things so we don't have to bond for everything. Yes, we've been, I think.
And that's one reason.
Thousand each, each year. Some of that was streets.
So this is brand-new, this has not been done in the past?
No, we have the last couple of years.
This is our third, this will be our third year for sure, maybe four, if I, I, I don't remember the exact dates that we've been saving for it. And some of that, it's just the way as a community, that's how you do your streets. As, as your road on Fifth Street was a one point three million dollar project. Had we not had tax money from the other residents who you're helping now, it would have been assessed at a one point three million. Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, we've been. It has been now as a dollar for dollar, perhaps, you know, but yes, we've been saving in the CIP. We, we're getting ahead, trying to get ahead on, on fires, fire equipment, fire apparatus, turnout gear, streets. Where, like I said, finally we got out of this hole that we've been in for since two thousand and seven. Anyone else? All right, with that then, we'll close Truth and Taxation and move to number eleven. Consider the adoption resolution approving the twenty twenty-three levy and budget, resolution twenty twenty-two dash twelve dash twelve dash one. Anything, Nick, you need to add to that? Nothing to add to that. And I'll look for a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash twelve dash twelve dash one, adopting the twenty twenty-three final levy and twenty twenty-three final budget.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion?
I do want to thank Nick that when he did come into council and looked at the budget, there was that bond payment that was. Yeah, that was supposed to end this year that our administrator in the interim had put in as for payment in twenty twenty-three. And that's one of the main, because that was about a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. So that was one of the reasons why there was a thirty percent increase is because that bond payment actually was done this year. And not, and, and she wasn't sure if it was going to be done this year or next year, or, or twenty twenty-three. So when he came in and was able to really dig down, so I appreciate that. And then he also went through other CIP projects and really lowered them from where they were in November when we had the first conversation. Once we, everybody got their proposed taxes. Because mine went up just as much as everybody else's, because I do too live here. I have a home here, I've been here for eighteen years, so. My value went up like seventy thousand. My taxes went up, I think I was up seven hundred for city. Hundred dollars, seven hundred dollars for the city portion. I forgot to bring my paperwork, but yes, mine did go, did go up.
And to expand on that, just to make a note, it was council's direction to the city interim city administrator to go high on everything. We knew we had to go high, we knew, we didn't want anything to fall through the cracks and miss anything. We didn't want to see that, we didn't want to have to have a preliminary at thirty percent. But we didn't want to, we wanted to make sure we captured everything too, knowing we were going to bring it back down. So that was that council's direction too, from what the interim administrator had, had done. It wasn't something she went off and did on her own, that was at our direction. And like I said, we don't like to do it that high, we don't want it, our preliminary should come in a lot closer and it, and it has in the past and it will in the future. It was just this year in that transition, we couldn't risk missing something and being stuck, not being able to adjust if needed. So just as a note, any other discussion?
So I'm not familiar with your structure. So if you approve the budget and levies, then it's going to be the twelve point one percent.
Correct.
Is this being recorded so we can come back?
Correct.
And, and say, well, let's see.
Yeah.
Absolutely, it is.
Taxes will probably decrease then in the next year.
I, I'm not one to raise taxes, I'm not one to want to add more. Yeah, the more than we have to, I, I'm, I'm full.
Absolutely, it is. Yep.
I can just quick, so yeah, this, the hundred and eighty-four specifically for that will be backed out. I guarantee it, it's now on video. The last city I worked for, we were able to lower the levy by five percent when I got in there. So I have a history of doing this.
Any further discussion? We have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries three zero.
Thank you.
We're going to take a, a two-minute recess, Nick and Nikki, if we can talk real quick. Real quick, yeah.
What's that?
Can you tell me what happened with the tiny apartment?
Not during the meeting, I know what recess right now. I'm going to let you talk to council members about it. Yeah.
I've heard rumors.
Yeah.
You know, I've heard rumors going out and you're like, oh, that.
After the meeting, one of them, probably Mayor Dodge will talk to you about it, so yeah.
Yeah, it's all public.
Yeah.
I figured it was. That's why I said if you can tell me, great, I don't want to interrupt, I don't want to get off the schedule.
Well, you know where to find me.
Yeah.
Let's see, what time do we?
Are we supposed to, are we done? I mean, do we leave or?
You can if you want to.
Do you know what this is right here?
It's been crazy.
So they're going to discuss. So.
I mean, if I'm interested in something like that.
There, okay, so we have the council.
I'm, I'm surprised how fast stuff has been moving.
They're just going to accept the write-in campaigns that happened because we have two.
Yes, a couple, you already have a couple.
Right.
Okay, okay.
So we have two former council members that did a write-in campaign who would have agreed to step in. And council has decided if they want to just do that or if they want to open.
Give us a couple minutes. Good, we're at page three up there. Page one now.
Okay, yeah.
It's a sketch already.
Yeah, and.
All right, we are back in session after recess, we have to move along. We have a council member who needs to exit, which means we want to have a quorum. So we got to run through with some last items, so we may go out of order here. Consider the adoption of resolution approving site plan for the addition of the city mayor public works building on Shimcore. Anything to add? Everyone's seen it, any, I'll look for a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
A motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries three zero. Consider the adoption of resolution approving plans and specifications as well as authorized bidding for an addition to this public works building. We've all been through this in, in work sessions, everyone should have seen it. I'll look for a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries three zero. Approval of fire department officers, we have. Looking to add. I'll get you there. There we go. Chief one, Andy Metzl. Training captain, Adam Metzl, training captain Zach Sifter, equipment captain Josh McIntosh, medical lieutenant Scott Gusterson. Do we have a motion to approve officers?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries three zero. Approval of the annual fire protection contracts with the townships. This is the same contract we've seen year after year with the same percentage of the contracts. Everyone should have seen this in their packets, I look for a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries three zero. Approval of the twenty twenty-three contract for city planning services. City planning services stays basically the same. The only changes in there is the hourly rate goes from a hundred dollars an hour to a hundred and ten. And then the travel rate goes from fifty dollars an hour to sixty-five. Otherwise, the contract stays essentially the same. We'll look for a motion to approve city planning services.
Make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? My only comment, Nick, on this is let's, John's done a great job, we just need to make sure he's available if we need him at meetings. Or maybe someone from their group that he can have here if, if needed. So let's make sure we capture some of that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries three zero. Consider adopting resolution declaring vacancy on city council, resolution twenty dash twenty-two dash twelve dash twelve dash six. Look for a motion to approve.
Motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nick, there was a typo in there, if you can fix. Discussion on method of filling council vacancies. Nick, you want to quick give an overview? So the city council has two options due to the tragic passing of Larry Milander. The two choices we have are to hold a special election, do a revote and do it that way. We would have to do that in our own expense, which could cost fifteen to twenty thousand dollars. Or we also have the option of doing what was done a couple of years ago is appoint until the end of the term, which would be two years from now. So with that, council has complete discretion in how they would wish to do either method. If you choose appointment, the council has complete discretion in how that appointment gets filled. You can go up for interviews, applications, or you can just appoint someone straight out in a way that we'd like to do it. Are you looking tonight just a decision to do an election and appoint? Or you're looking for, if, if it's an election, it's election, if it's a point, decide how we're going to do that or is that at the next meeting? Both. First, the one. My recommendation is appointment, we don't need to spend the money and the appointment process. Someone would like, like, like to make a motion on how we should fill this vacancy.
I'll make the motion to appoint a person to fill the vacancy.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries three zero. Now, appointing, do we want to pick someone, just pick someone outright? Or do we want to put it out and have people apply for the position? Using kind of just off, we had an election a month ago, we knew who was interested, do we want to just?
That's kind of what I was thinking.
Or?
It may, or at least offer it to her, he or she.
I'm, I'm okay either way, I tend to think we should go out, but we just had an election, there were, there wasn't a lot of interest. We didn't have people filing, so I didn't see a lot of interest in the community for it.
Right.
You have something real quick? You're, okay.
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 Sorry, I don't want to interrupt. You know, was it, was, he passed it before the election?
No, just two weeks ago, yep.
He, he wasn't up for election. His seat was not up.
This is filling his seat, a two-year term for his seat.
Do what the city needs to do.
Okay. If someone would like to make a motion, we'll entertain it. We have reached out to the one who had the second number of write-ins and she is interested in filling the seat.
I would be opening, I would be open to appointing Peggy Wagner to the seat since she did get the thirty-nine write-in votes. Below the first write-in vote.
Would you want to add anything to it that if for some reason she then declines, then we go for?
Yeah, then we can open it up.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a, a motion, a second, any further discussion? And I would agree with that, I think that's a, a good way to do it since we just had the election and we didn't have a lot of interest in people filing. If it was a year from now, I would, I would look at it differently, but.
Right.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries three zero. Thank you, Nikki. Happy holidays. All right, with that, we no longer have a quorum, so we cannot have any discussion, business discussions through city council. But I apologize to the Veterans Memorial, they wanted to come and present, but as we're short people, so we're going to still have them present to us too. We'll make sure we got the PowerPoint or we already have it actually, and we'll get it to the other council members. But we cannot, but we cannot have any city discussion about it. So thank you, Stan.
You're welcome.
I apologize.
Just, just want you to know that the next time I have a meeting with a lot of stuff, when I'm going to get you guys over there because you got it all done.
We moved it.
I am Stan Halt, for those of you that don't know me. And I've been on the Veterans Committee for the memorial here in town since the get-go, along with Myron, who is a former, Myron Taylor, former council member. And also one of the founders of the memorial. What we're looking at here, these are the paper gardens that are in. This is the memorial right here. And this in red right here is what we're proposing. Here's where our driveway goes into the parking lot. And we're proposing the estate when they redid. And we're proposing the state when they redid Highway twenty-five. And that doesn't quite show on here. There's an indentation. And it would look like it's the turn lane to go into the parking lot. It is not a turn lane going in. It's a motor coach parking spot. That's what it was designed for. But right now, if we were to have a motor coach come in, they'd step off the coach onto the curb or into, onto the lawn that's there. And we've proposed that this sidewalk would go in. It wouldn't be along the highway because there's a couple, there's one light pole in there. So we would put it just to the west of that light pole and then basically go straight across the trail parking area. And then we would bring the sidewalk up to where we turn in. We put a wide spot in where the bus would unload. And then we would put the sidewalks because what will happen? People are going to take the shortest distance to go to the memorial. This will not be handicap. In order for a handicap person, if they're going to get off this motor coach, they have to go around and then come this way. We talked with the county on that and the county feels pretty comfortable. Marty Welch with the county parks, he says, you're, you're giving them a way to get around, he says. And he says, I, I think you're good. He said, you'd be good that way. So that means we don't have to kind of curve here in order to get it, to get it done. What the proposal is, we proposed to the county and the county board, I should say the railroad authority, which is the same members as the county board, okayed the sidewalk. And they also okayed what we asked for, one-third of the cost of that sidewalk. We're saying that this sidewalk, which is part of the trail area, that they have a vested interest in there, they get them. And the rest, basically it's memorial property. But we're coming to you guys and asking, would you consider one-third also? And you've got time on this because we're not going to get it in this year anymore or this winter. So it's going to happen next, next season is when that'll occur. And then we as a memorial committee would, would do also one-third. The other request that we're looking at is I believe the city takes, does runs to the bobcat or something down the sidewalks? Yep. If, if that would be a consideration. Right now, this, we do not plow the parking lot. Neither does the county with the trail system, so we don't plow the parking lot. We have noticed that the parking lot does get used though because apparently there's maybe some snow shooting down on the, on the trail. I'm not sure. Sometimes they just park in there to stop the lot. This is, this is a convenient parking lot compared to the county parking lot. This one here is a little more convenient, so we get, we get a little more business that way, for what it's worth. Why would, why should the city be a part of this? We have seen the people that will just be walking, they'll walk down here across the parking lot. We've got a concrete waterway right here. They'll walk down there and forward to the lumberyard and, and/or, you know, to go on around. So we feel that there's a benefit, you know, that we all can benefit from this and along, along with the city also, so.
Along with the lumberyard.
Well, we, we, we could, we thought that that would be a possibility, but he's been a good neighbor, so we don't want to push it. I know.
What's the estimated cost, Dan, for the project? What's the estimated cost for the project?
It's a little, it's around nine thousand dollars. We got one bid only. And we're looking for a second bid and we're, we're pretty certain that's going to come, that's going to come down a few thousand. The county, the county gave their approval for three thousand bucks right off the bat, so.
So you're just putting in from where they'll unload and straight over. You're not doing that whole red dotted line, correct?
No.
No.
Correct.
It's a five-foot sidewalk that will, it will be about five foot, uh, three to, three to five feet off of this state highway. So we don't, we don't have to be concerned about the state. We're coming right up to the edge. Because we, we don't have to be concerned about their signs that are in here. They're good. We do have to talk with the state because we're, we're going to hit the curving where we have the bus unloaded.
So what's the nine thousand dollars? It's just putting in right where they'll unload from the coal?
Nine thousand dollars will go from County Road thirty all the way to the turnoff right here where it turns into our parking lot.
Oh, okay. Okay, that's true. And straight over heading?
Yep.
Heading east?
The east-west one too.
Yeah, okay.
Let me, let me, let me drill in here.
How wide?
I know it would be, it would be, it would be a beautiful Chester. I could put, if you could put it up a little bit.
Closer?
Yeah, yeah, a little, a little bit higher so I can see the lumberyard.
Yep.
Gotcha.
And I, we'll, we'll, we'll bring that sidewalk right down here. It's going to be wider over here, probably about five, six feet down to about three feet here. Okay? It'd be beautiful if a guy could run that right down to the lumberyard. But what happens, we have a, a drain tile here and a manhole and it'd have to be bridged, I think. I'm not sure. And that, and that cost would, so. So this is where we're looking at this year. We think, we think that that is very doable and that, and that would take care of our needs. Like, just take a minute or two, I'll fill you in. And you, you guys can talk about it or you can, if you want to bring it up to parks or they want us to go to parks, you can, you know. But you can talk about those things. We do have the, the winner to work with. What, what is the actual?
Why don't you come visit us up at the baseball club?
Well, the baseball club is, is a, is a big supporter of ours. So that's, that's where we get a lot of our funds from, along with Conia Legion, Lions, et cetera. We've, we've been very fortunate. We, we're very healthy. We've, we've got a.
So like I mentioned, we can't make any decisions, but what we will do, we'll take this presentation. Nick has it. We'll get it to wherever it's appropriate. If it's park board or city council on a workshop, we'll do that early in the next year. We'll have a new council, well, two new council members at that time. We'll get everyone up to date. And then we'll certainly take a look at it.
Now, was there something else in that presentation? Because there was another red dotted section.
Or is that done or?
I'm filling in on, on the rest of what's going to be happening. We've, we've sort of completed phase one. We are now on, on phase two on this property. And we're looking to be putting, this is where the bathroom basically is set. The county is going to be covering up the bathroom. Putting some screening and touchover and we're on a sidewalk down to the memorial concrete surface area from, from the parking area. We're finding people are parking here, walking out across. We says, well, let's, let's get it done. Our first thing that we're going to be doing is we gotta, we gotta change our drainage because right now we have just a little bit of wall. Our water is going away. But once we put a sidewalk in here, we're putting a dam in here and we're going to cover it. So we're going to be, we're going to be putting some underground drainage going around the back and then bringing that drainage over to this manhole area here. Right, right now, this whole paver garden has got drainage underneath it. We've got lines, tile lines up there. That'll be one of the things. This sidewalk will be another one. What you see right here is a cement pad. And that cement pad is supposed to, this is going to be our second phase for equipment that we're going to be putting in here. The, this is tentatively set for cheap. We don't know how we're going to get the equipment or what equipment is going to become available to us. That's, that's on the, on the drawing board. We're looking at a helicopter. We're looking at a tank, a hauler. And we're not quite sure what's supposed to be here. We, we do have a storage shed back here already where we, we keep a lot of the stuff that we are doing for a, we started a flag program beginning about in the spring of this year where we take the deceased veterans coffin flag and it's then blown all of the memorial for one month. Families, family of deceased veterans are invited. We do a ceremony where the flag is unfolded. We have a bugler out there that'll play to the colors on one, when the flag goes up, taps when the flags comes down. So the next month, the flag goes down. We've had up to, oh, between thirty to forty people there with two different families that'll come be a part of this ceremony. It's, it's worked out quite well and we're getting next summer's schedule ready. We'll, we'll probably starting in April and then go through October. So that, that's, that's another thing that's, there's activity that is happening that we're doing there besides the Memorial Day service and stuff like that. Any questions?
I don't have any questions, no.
No, love all the work you do, Stan and Myron.
Not alone.
Well, you got a whole team, I know.
Our committee's done a great job.
Twenty guys are around this committee and the veterans from Water Tunnel, Conia.
And Carver, Carver County has already committed a third? Did Carver County already commit a third of the cost?
Yes, that's it.
They committed, okay. When are, just for reference, so when we talk about this in twenty twenty-three, are you looking for maybe some feedback early? Are you looking March, April? What, can you give us a little date so we can get it on our agendas?
Well, as soon as that, the, that we can all cement in, probably, you know, we'll probably be ready to go. We'll probably have somebody to try to get it in.
Okay.
Because this is one thing that we can do. It's not going, this whole year won't happen until we get, until we get.
Okay, yep.
What, if, if we, if we get a piece of the equipment, then we'll, we'll find out what the size is. Then we'll put in the pad. That's what we'll get that. See, and then we'll also put that sidewalk in. Also, you can see here, there's sidewalk that's going to be connecting each of these paths. So that, that's all in stage two.
Okay. All right, so by the end of March, have you got something from us by the end of March?
March, March will be good.
Some feedback by then, okay. Does that fit into our schedule, I assume?
And I guess, consideration, keep in mind the, the pawling of the sidewalk because if we put it in, it'd be nice to keep it, to keep it clean like you do the rest of them, so.
Perfect.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you and the entire committee, Myron and everyone. I, I appreciate it. You guys have done a phenomenal job.
Well, you can, you can take, you can take some credit here for yourselves because this is probably one of the largest in the Midwest. And it, and it's the only one of its kind that has the, sort of the modern graphics on it. But there's memorials out there that do feature some of that. But this one has a registry, so any soldier that has a paver in that paver gardens, you can go to the registry and read their story if their story has been submitted. That's on the registry. Sure, Nick.
I just want to feedback when I, even before interviewed with mayor for the position I have now. I toured the community and that, that memorial stood out to me. That was impressive when I came to town and looked at it. So I just want to tell you that that was a drawing factor for me that told me this was a good community when you have things like this in it. I had north, but up to seven, but when I would, when I came visiting, I would come up from the south during the daytime and I'd go past it. I remember going past it the first time and just being very impressed with that out there.
Nighttime view is probably the wow of their nighttime. There, there's one other little thing that, you know, it's not widely known unless you walk up to it. You can, we, we have a barcode on the window of the museum case there. You take, you hit that barcode and on it with your phone and you can get the narration of each of the panels of it. Because each image on those panels comes from someplace, from some segment of, of possibly of war or some training of some kind. So it's, you know, it's pretty complete. The, the guys have taught, you know, they've taught it through quite well, so it's pretty neat. I have, I have, we've given some tours there already for, for children. We haven't had any bus tours come in through yet, but. But anyhow, yeah, it's, we've, we've been very pleased ourselves with how it's come out, so thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, with that, and I don't know.
We can't even motion.
Before, but we'll look for motion to, we'll adjourn.
Yeah, just adjourn.
So I suppose we should have done that.
Yeah, I should have adjourned when Nikki.
Should have adjourned before, so I apologize for that, but we are adjourned unless I hear different.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in. If anything you need to help, yeah.
Not quite yet. We have turned the tape off.
So I was just curious about.